Thank you very much Roger for coming down. I had asked the city clerk to put a block of time on the agenda for you to come down because I know that we've had a very dry summer and we see mandatory water bans all over town. And through conversations that I've had with you in the past, I don't know that I'm all too concerned because you've indicated in the past that our reservoirs because of the nature of the watershed recharge very fast, especially during the winter. So I think that we'll be fine as a community in terms of our water supply. But I was just looking for a synopsis, if you will, of where we stand and what you're expecting for when we'll get replenished and be back to normal. And I guess the good news is that revenues are up when it's dry. I'm assuming people consumed a lot of water this summer, so factoring that we should be taking in more money this year than we originally projected. So I'm hoping that you can touch upon all those things and see where we stand.
The chart that I gave you just gives you a breakdown of the consumption totals year to date through November. They aren't as significant as you would think. I mean, if you look at November, they're relatively close. You're starting to pick up a little bit of the moratorium reduction that you might otherwise see. So you made a good point in terms of the earlier part of the summer where it was dry, there was some increase. If you look at August and September, we were slightly higher on both of those months. October was also higher. But I think what you're going to see going into the winter months, December, January, February, you may see a slight reduction compared to prior years, and that's going to reflect the water moratorium. However, I don't see any real strong need to do anything dramatic on this. We're at 55%. We went out and did a, basically a reservoir level evaluation on November 3rd, and the system wide, we're down 45%. Still 55% of the system available. This is the time of year when people just really only use their basic or have basic water needs. They don't have any real external or outdoor watering that they have to deal with. So it should be fairly stable through the wintertime. I think it's going to be probably because of the increase in water consumption that's reflected, July, August, September, October, in the wintertime, it's going to settle down a bit. So we're going to be fairly close to normal. If you look at this, I would say, you look at December of 2014 and 2015, you're in that 123, 125 range with a moratorium that was in place. I think you're going to be probably between 115 and 120, something like that. It's going to be down slightly, but I don't think it's anything that we need to look at in terms of, you know, you get a drought, so you ask people to cut back, so you're not going to have the consumption, so you have to raise the rates. We aren't going to get into a rate increase due to the fact that there's a diminished water supply. I think we'll be okay on that.
Now, I'm just curious, where were our water levels, say, in the spring, in April, May? Were we at capacity?
Pretty close to capacity. We're usually over 90% to 100% in April. May starts to cut back a little bit, but even at the end of May, June, we weren't in bad shape. We were over 80% in the end of June when we first started having inquiries from the state. They do a drought monitoring, and they got a drought advisory committee that meets. And once you get into a drought status, then they meet on a regular basis. So from June, probably the end of June until now, we've probably lost 30%, say 25%, 30% of our capacity.
Because I know that, I remember last winter, I think it was maybe in December, I'd asked you about the water levels, and you had told me you weren't concerned about it because of the recharge in the winter. So I didn't know if we had done that over last winter and started off the season, you know, normal. So based on what you're saying, we did.
Yeah. Lemmonster's registration amount is 4.94 million gallons per day. That's what we're registered with the state to withdraw. Usually it gets seasonal, and that's an annualized 4.94. So for the last few years, we've been running somewhere between 3.75 and 3.9. So Lemmonster residents have done a good job in conserving. They pay attention. They've done retrofits on their water consumption at their house, and they pay attention. You know, they're doing a lawn sprinkler, they're putting in on a meter, you know, maybe they water two or three times a week rather than every day. So they're pretty responsible. Our system is pretty tight. We usually have an account for water, which is water from leaks and things like that, of between, say, 5% and 7.5% in our capacity. Or our consumption on a per capita basis is usually less than 60 gallons per person per day. We've been in the mid-50s the last three years. People are pretty responsible in Lemmonster as far as that goes.
Now, I go down and walk behind Schollen Farms quite a bit, so I see the reservoir quite a bit, and it's very low. There's a lot of exposed rock, and I probably walked out in some places where the water would probably be way over my head. So with that being said, all the edges of the reservoir are very exposed.
Right.
And there's a lot of debris in trees and things like that. Some of it was cut down, kind of fell toward the reservoir during that fire that they had a year ago, this past spring. I noticed that nobody's been in there to do any cleaning. Is now a good time maybe for somebody to go in and pull some of that out of there while it's very accessible?
We can do some of it. We just got done, we just finished Allen Street last week, so usually the construction crew might go in and do some of the reservoir, you know, sprucing up as far as downed trees and things like that. We don't get up there much. I mean, your window between when you close for the construction season and when snow flies is very, very limited. So a lot of times, we don't get to it to the extent that we'd like.
Does anybody else have any, anybody have any questions or comments for Roger? Council Feckley?
So Roger, actually, you just mentioned Allen Street, and I wanted to tell you that. I think we all got an email from the resident at Allen Street today. She said she was really very pleased with the work that was done there and that the crews were very professional and courteous to them, so I just wanted to let you know that.
We were given a copy of that, so I forwarded that to the crew, but they did do a really good job.
Yeah, she was happy.
Well, you know, as we go into the winter and try and prioritize where we're going to go next spring, we're going to take a look at the same issues. You know, we've got a list of dirty water complaints this year. We were able to do, we took care of the Grant Street problem. Took care of Hickory Road and Allen and Moreland, and then we finished, we did a big project on Mill Street, we did Martin Bishop. So we tried to get areas that contribute to dirty water and other sections as well as having their own issues. But yeah, it was a pretty good year as far as getting a lot of issues resolved.
Yeah, the neighbors in Moreland were pleased too. I think I already told you that, yeah, very. So, but I did want to ask, if we have a dry winter, and then we go into spring again, you know, without too much water and this continues, what's the end game? I mean, if we have another year of less than, you know, than normal water or rain?
Two things. The, if we go through the winter and we do what we normally do consumption-wise, even if we get a relatively mild winter with some precipitation, it should recharge the reservoir somewhat, but we would probably start off with a moratorium. Again, that's all dependent upon where you are with the volume of water in the reservoirs. And we do have backup sources, but we're in the middle of doing the gatehouse at the Wachusett reservoir. So we'd have to take a look at what we would do there to supplement the system if we had to go to extreme measures. But I don't know, right now, I don't see that happening. We've had, through October, we had 30 inches of rain. Annually, we usually get 45. So depending on January and December, if we get, let's say, eight inches, we'll have been down seven inches or so from a normal year. But I think going into the spring, I think we're going to be okay. It's like when I talked to Council Cormier last year, you know, even though we're down going into the winter, we do reasonably well, and the reservoirs recharge pretty well, and the residents, you know, are really conscientious. So we don't have a lot of consumption from January until probably April when people start in their gardens or their lawns or what have you. So before we ever get to that point, we'll have a really good handle on where we are.
Okay, okay, good, thank you.
You're welcome.
Anybody else have any questions for Roger? He's here. That was easy.
Yeah.
Just to, just so I don't catch anybody by surprise, I have been looking at rate structure. Last rate increase on water was 2012, on sewage 2013, and trying to keep in mind the economy and trying to keep in mind inflation and what we have going forward. There will probably be a submill for the next meeting, but take a good look at it, it's not going to be anything significant, and it's probably going to be less than the inflation rate. So it's just more a matter of keeping it reasonable without increasing it so that it's onerous. But just giving everybody a heads up on that. We're going to be basing it on CPI and inflation, so it's not going to be a whole lot, because I think inflation over the last four years totaled like a little over 5.5%. So it's not going to be much.
Okay, good, that's good to know. Council Marshawn, I know you just came in. Do you have any questions?
No, I'm going to quit, thank you. All it does is just get Jack to work.
All right. Just all the questions, thank you very much Roger.
You're welcome.
Thank you, Roger.
Thank you.
All right, anyway, so off the heels of the Bentley study, the downtown study that you remember was released, our next step after that was get some local people together, get some talent, and talk about how to market and promote City of Lemmonster. So we got Melissa Tasker and Wendy Weeks and Lori, Lisa Maroney and Valerie Wellin, who's right there, Wave, she showed up tonight, thank you. Ivy Boule is a technical writer, Erin Fay, technical writer. At the time, Valerie was working in the business, right? At the time. Moved on to a different world a little bit, right?
Yeah, education.
Yeah, but same kind of multimedia. Ellen, Erin Fay's technical writer, Liz Mason from Greenleaf Construction, Michael Hotwell, social media and content manager, Kim Fenwick, and also Bonnie Budd, and a couple of other people. So we got together for a number of different meetings, and when we were through, we went right back to, do you have the article, Jim's article?
Yep.
We got right back to telling a story. And who better to tell a story than the people who live in Lemmonster? Some of our greatest advocates and promoters and ambassadors are new families that have moved to Lemmonster, or new folks that have moved to Lemmonster. And then our businesses. So we reverted back to a article. I got a call from one of the former Sentinel and Enterprise reporters that now works as a correspondent for The Globe and said, doing an article on Lemmonster for a real estate section, and who should we talk to? And I said, I have the perfect person, Jim LeBlanc. And I think most of you have seen the article, but if you didn't, keep a copy because it's really well done. And I knew it was a good article when first thing in the morning before the sun even came up. I got a text from the governor saying, that was a really good article. And that day and weeks to follow, the response was pretty much the same from people that either live here, live here, or read the article. And we realized, I think, the general consensus was, we've got a great story to tell, but at the end of the day, how do you take this great story of so many things that we have, so many assets and amenities in the city, and bring it down to a message? And that starts our presentation tonight. There's our story everywhere you go, every corner, every meeting you go to, there's a great story about Lemmonster. And I know you can read, so I'll just jump around. It goes from business to recreation to transportation, educational opportunities and good schools, and a diverse and vibrant city. Our events, we have another article, I think, is that in there as part of that presentation? The article on Judy's article? Okay, we'll get that to you. But anyway, a good article that Judy Sumner shared with me about how communities are really stepping up to do festivals. And I thought, heck, we've got a little bit of experience, Council Marshawn, right, at doing festivals, getting pretty good at it. So we looked at all of the things that, I mean, these are the big things. This doesn't even count some of the smaller things or the things that the churches do or nonprofits. Some more of our events, and again, there are plenty of non-city events by local organizations that, you know, aren't listed here, but it gives you a little bit of a flavor of some of the things that are happening here. All events are run on donations, on a shoestring budget. Each event attracts hundreds to thousands depending on the event, provides free family fund for the region, helps sustain and build business, builds a sense of community and belonging, and makes Lemmonster unique. Well, we had the, well, let me just get to the statistical part of this, because this is one example of one event. People attended from over cities, and we could track this by people that bought tickets online. So we could tell you that 80, people came from 80 different cities and towns, Massachusetts, including places like Malden and Somerville, Quincy, and nine other states, including Arizona, Connecticut, Illinois, New Hampshire, New Jersey, New York, Rhode Island, Vermont, Massachusetts. Does that mean that people were packing up the Winnebago from Arizona to head out here? I don't know, but that's where, so they might have been out here on business, they might have been out here visiting friends, heard about it, and they came. And again, when they purchased their tickets and we signed them up, those are the locations that they gave us. The cannoli fest, we sold between 7,000 and 8,000 cannolis. I don't think there's anybody in the universe can take claim to that. But what we didn't see is every restaurant was full, and that was a Thursday night. It's not really the busiest night of the week, but, you know, it's Thursday night, it's not Friday or Saturday. It was a nice night. And it also introduced and gave future business to local bakeries. So it wasn't a very expensive night for us. It was probably expensive if you got carried away and started buying them by the dozen, but for the most part, right, and I saw people doing that. I'm like rolling quarters in my pocket, coming up with five bucks to get a cannoli. People are taking off with a dozen or two. That's not something I expected to see. But it did give a good introduction and I think builds business. A lot of those people were first timers here and went to a lot of the local restaurants, and I think they'll be back. Johnny Appleseed, Wendy got in her mountain climbing uniform and costume, and she climbed to the peaks of the barrels of City Hall here. So she got to the most, from the lowest point to the highest point, right, she went. And she snapped a quick shot of the Johnny Appleseed festival. Thousands and thousands of people come. They come from everywhere. If you talk to the people that run raffles and people write their name and address, you know, their name and phone number, you know, they'll tell you, people come from everywhere to come to this event. And it's quite an event. It's a huge event. We've built a strong community. We've done more than many others. We need to share our story. Besting in our schools, you know, we don't tell this, we don't share this story. And again, in our marketing and advertising campaign, we're trying to reach, in many cases, one bullet, trying to reach many, but there are many different situations where you're trying to reach a young family or a single parent that's looking to decide, you know, what community they're going to buy in, what's the school system like? Again, we spent $90 million to improve our school buildings. That's substantial. Recreation, playgrounds, open space, trails, parks, recreational opportunities. You all know this, I know this, people in the closed circuit know this, but you'd be surprised how some people from North Lemmonster don't know about, you know, the water park on the south side. We are infrastructure ready. We've been working for over 20 years. We just had Roger here to bring infrastructure to new commercial industrial sites. So no longer do I have to stand at the top of what was the end of Pioneer Park and stand there and point with a set of binoculars affixed to my face to where the infrastructure was, which was located down by the mall, to show people where the infrastructure was. We have land, and now we have the infrastructure. Businesses want communities where their employees of every pay scale can live and raise a family. That's Lemmonster. South Gate Park, Tansio, the landfill, Jungle Road are all primed for development and all infrastructure shovel-ready, as we say. And we have a skilled workforce and educational opportunities available for any business and important. Small businesses, city staff celebrates the opening of about 30 new businesses a year, and that was even through the recession. Melissa Tasker, small business coordinator, specifically works with small businesses. Lisa Maroney works on the larger businesses, and they also work on events. And there's a whole team of people here at City Hall that help out, most of the time on their own time, addressing the needs of known existing small businesses. City service, city services for large employers. City Site Finder online, available for spaces of all size. At first, people would say, how come such and such a developer seems to get all the business in town? And we thought, you know, we really don't want to be in that business, so let's do something fair for everyone. So if somebody comes in and says they're looking for 3,000 square feet, Lisa will put it out to everybody that's on that list, real estate, property owners, brokers, you name it, if their name's on that list, they get a copy of that Site Finder. If somebody comes in and says, I'm selling space or I'm leasing space, same thing happens. So we put it out to everybody, and when we let the two parties, you know, we let the parties decide amongst themselves. It's worked very well. Network of people on email blast for those seeking space in Lemmonster. Again, that's the City Site Finder. We never stop visiting businesses. We're always out there. We just started a new cable show, and we do, we're looking for somebody to actually take it over. I get it started, but I really want to hand it off to somebody who is and will be excited about helping small business. So we feature three small businesses a week, every other week, and it plays over cable as well as, we're hooking on to social media like Facebook, et cetera. Housing, bringing new affordable market rate housing to Lemmonster with Watermill and City Place, more to come with Ivory Keys on Adam Street and Carter School and also 45 Summer Street. Improving our streets, again, you've all been there, over $40 million in state funding for projects and $30 million more on the tip, $200,000 in sidewalks every year to make Lemmonster more walkable. Schollen Farms, I don't think I need to explain that, I'll read the slides, pretty self-explanatory, but our trail system is second to none. And again, all part of our marketing. Arts and culture, from the library that every single week is putting something on. There's never an event that isn't well attended over there, and they put on hundreds of events through the course of the year. Schools partnered with City to celebrate our youth talents. Make continues to offer downtown shopping, concerts, dance, and art, all part of Lemmonster's every day. City services, again, we offer full scope of city services. Library welcomes an average of 80 people per hour. Many services other communities don't have or pay extra for services such as travel. Then our recreation programs, and our departments and schools offer year-round programming. Taking advantage of all that's offered to better Lemmonster, grants to improve the city services, adopt the Housing Development Incentive Program, HDEP we call it, adopted expedited permitting for South Gate Park to demonstrate our ability to approve projects quickly and technical review in new and expanding businesses where we invite either the business or the project developer in, and we sit around with all of the key department heads and people involved in inspections, and we work with those businesses so there are no surprises along the way, and it works well. What have we done so far to market our city? I think we've done well. We've done it in-house, but we are not experts. We know this is a story, we know the story just like you do, but how do you get that story out? So what have we done that worked, you know, fairly successfully? Well, we've got that Welcome Lemmonster, Pioneer Plastic City, the birthplace of Johnny Appleseed. We'd like to replace that sign. It's worked well, we like Johnny Appleseed, we'll certainly include that, but it's time for an upgrade. Ready For You campaign, that was done by a student from Fitchburg State University who came in and raised the $6,000, and we put the Ready For You campaign together. And this is just a small scale of what we'd really like to do, but it did show us that through time that there are just other ways to get your message out, and we've got to adapt to those. This is just a quick look at what other gateway cities are doing here in Massachusetts. Worcester calls themselves the creative city. If you've noticed, they've gotten away, one of the things is, they've gotten away from, if you open a planning book, they all begin to look the same. Live, work, play, center of the universe, you know, we all start to sound the same with our message. And now, sort of the trend is to sort of get away from that and put something together that's more... that's more like a commercial application rather than a government, you know, that standard government webpage or that standard government marketing piece. So again, Worcester, the creative city. Salem's still making history. How will you be part of it? Destination New Bedford. Devon's our neighbor 10 minutes to the east. More than a home, a community. Attracting business. I got my own little message about that, but yes. More than home, again, a community, building community. And branding and marketing. That's our last slide. No? Go ahead. Creation of a brand identifies the city, and that's what we want. Again, such a big story to tell. A strong brand helps to compete for new businesses and residents, helping to strengthen the local and regional economy, helps to differentiate our cities from others. Unique characteristics are important to attracting investment, people, and capital to Lemmonstern. Sending the message through marketing. Cross-channeling our messages, utilizing a mix of marketing and communications channels to tell the Lemmonstern story both on and offline. Anyone here that uses sort of social media and the internet... So you go to the internet, you do a quick search, and you say, you know, "Council Dabrowski says, 'I want to take my kids to, you know, I want to go pick apples.'" And you live in East Bridgewater, and you want a day in the country. Then you go back to your social media site, and what do you see? An ad pops up picking apples in Lemmonstern, Sholen Farms, Day in the Country, and all the other things that we have to offer here. Again, that's sort of a little bit of our mix of cross-marketing and channels to tell Lemmonstern's story. Utilizing advertising, used to creatively reach business decision-makers to consider Lemmonstern. In the past, we'd put this booklet together, and everyone would get it, this ready-for-you. Today, we're going to more stealth-like target our audiences. So if it's a family looking to relocate, or they're looking for another school to send their kids to, or they're looking for something to do on the weekends, looking to go shopping, whatever it is, we can be more strategic about who gets our message. We don't have to just send it out broad-based and send out 100,000 copies of this to reach 50 people that we're trying to impact. Tell Lemmonstern's story beyond its city limits. Activate the community by working with businesses and groups to create an echo chamber about our message. Here's what we hope to accomplish. Again, we use our city seal and everything, but we don't really have a logo. And think of it as you're running a business, and what do you need when you're running a business and you're trying to market your product and advertise it? You need a logo, something that's consistent, that you can use all over on all your products. So now you have a standard. It's in place. It's something that we all use. If you looked at our banners in town, every time we have an event, somebody comes up with a whole new... They all look different, every one of them. If we've done 50 events a year, we have 50 banners that all look a little bit different. Our new sign on Route 2 as you enter the city, but also keep our logo there and the consistency of our branding. All signs, banners, marketing materials will be coordinated. Let the people and businesses tell our story. And there's nothing better than bumping into somebody at one of the festivals or an event when they start to tell you about how wonderful downtown looked with all the flowers, or about a good shopping experience they had in town, or they went to one of our restaurants. There's nothing better than listening to them and the passion that they tell the story with. That's the kind of... We don't have to hire actors to tell our story. We only need to reach out to the community, and there's plenty of people that are willing to tell our story. No boring logos or worn-out taglines, no stories from the mayor about how wonderful it is here and you should come in my stuffy suit and new tie. Multimedia approach so we can be stealth-like, again, and target our audiences, using cutting-edge strategies and technologies available, using the best thinkers in the business. Again, one of the things that we've stressed on is that we need to be able to track our progress and success. It's not just about doing a bunch of promotion and marketing and spending money, but at the end of the day, we need to be able to track our progress and be able to quantify what impact we had with that marketing approach. Why now? Lemmonstern offers so much for so much less. Bucking the trend to the east. That could be a tagline. There's Jamaica Plain, and again, close to Boston, but, you know, Jamaica Plain at one time wasn't the most fashionable place to live, but with the housing costs further and further, communities are getting pushed out, and that's what they say about Jamaica Plain. The median single-family home price is a mere $820,000. Top spots in Boston Magazine to be living or investing. Walpole, again, sounds a lot like us. Large lots, plenty of green space, town is sports crazy, has good schools, and offers a lot of community spirit. Sounds like us. Medium sale price, $505,000. Natick, same sort of thing. Doing a lot of same things. We're doing the same things as them, them us. Close to commuter rail. Medium price as people pushed out from places like Wellesley that push into places like Ashland and Natick, $555,000. And again, what's it like to live in Lemmonstern? This is what they said, Boston Gold, just back in February, with a single tax rate accessed through Route 2 and at the state 190, and a welcoming climate at City Hall, including two staff members dedicated to supporting incoming businesses. Lemmonstern is an attractive location to setting up shop. And just in case you wanted the average property value in Lemmonstern, $255,150,000. So, not bad at all. So this is really... We're at that point now where we're ready. We've put the work behind it. We've done a number of things. I mean, we've worked on a ton of projects, getting infrastructure in the city. I don't have to bring all of what's been done in the city up to you. You've been with us right along. You know what it's taken to get us here. We're in good spot. People are very bullish on Lemmonstern. There's lots of investment coming into the city. Council Dabrowski, you mentioned about the court. They're citing a one-year extension, and then we're working on a longer-term lease. We're going to have to do some renovations and upgrades to the court. They need... They want more space. So that's just one sort of area. Tomorrow night, you've all been invited to a press event with the Lieutenant Governor. More and more people are bullish on town. People are moving in. They're excited about us. But again, we don't want to sort of ride those waves of good economy, bad economy. We want to stay on top of things, and we need to sustain ourselves so that this isn't an up and down, up and down. In marketing and advertising, you really have to be out there all the time. So our next step is... See if I can find that. We take in roughly... Oh, that wasn't the average price then. That was the average property value.
That's the average.
I'm sorry. The average that we've been taking in years, 2009 to current, from hotel tax, is about average, and we've had years where it's up and other years it's down. An average of $255,000. So our aim isn't to spend $255,000, but the people in the business have told us it's going to cost you to get yourself going and do the branding and the logo and begin some of the, you know, advertising and marketing and get it really together. You're going to spend about $50,000 a year on this, every year. It could be off a little, could be up a little, could be down a little, but that's what you're going to spend on a serious campaign. And so we're ready. Again, all the staff here, you know, we met time and time again. Infrastructure's ready. Got plenty of projects in the pike. The housing market is back. Bullish, bullish, bullish on Lemmonstern. Things are happening, and people want to be part of the community, in the business community, and so we're ready for it now. So with the great assistance of some of the residents in town who again work in this business, we came to the conclusion at the very end, it's time, but we have a great story to tell and we're ready to share. And that is the conclusion. Any questions at all?
Mayor?
Yes?
You say we take in about $250,000 in taxes?
Yes.
Where does that go in? The general fund?
Goes in the general fund. We use a lot of... I mean, it's, you know, a good portion of it we use for, you know, to balance the budget. But we feel safe about using, you know, about taking a piece of $50,000 and put it... And that's really, you know, that was the... That was the real reason that tax was promoted originally was to help promote restaurants and businesses and promote the community.
How much goes to the Johnny Appleseed thing on Route 2?
We do the visitor center on Route 2, $30,000.
That's about the same amount. It's been for how many years? Quite a bit, right?
It's been, yeah, since they've been open, so we probably got, I don't know, hundreds of thousands of dollars into that visitor center.
Okay, thanks.
But we have no way of measuring. Like, we don't have any way to measure how many people stop at the visitor center and come to Lemmonstern. It's hard for us to do that. So I can't give you... Maybe the chamber can give you more data on that. This is completely different. We're not looking for people to stop by the visitor center to bring them into Lemmonstern. If they come here, that's great. Ours is more, we're going to reach out to those demographics of businesses and people. We're going to get our message out to them in their forum, not hope they stop by the visitor center and maybe hope they come to Lemmonstern, maybe hope they spend some money, and hope that they maybe set up a business here and think that downtown and the other areas are cute. But this is actually hitting that market through the proper marketing techniques. And these companies...
I just look at the center, and it's the same center it's been for 30 years. I don't know what the other community means if they've increased the amount of money that they've given to what I have a feeling probably not, but it just seems like a good entrance way to Lemmonstern.
It is. It is.
If, you know, we could... Regionally, the different cities and towns that do badly on it could do something to try to increase their budget. Perhaps we could have that merchandising inside, things like that, but...
They do a good job there. They do a good job there. They have a lot of product in there. They do a good job. This is completely separate and different from what they're doing. I think that what they're doing is one piece of it. This is sort of like what business is doing. Not sort of, it is what business is doing to be able to reach their customers and potential customers.
Mayor, maybe I missed it, but who is going to do the design work? Are you going to have professionals?
Right. We're going to hire a company. There'll be plenty of input. There's plenty of people, you know, who want to show, to share their ideas.
But you're going to have professional firms?
We've talked to a couple of companies, just to bring them in, who have done work in other communities and said, "What do you think here? I mean, what's realistic to do it right?" If we, you know, we could put out another brochure and raise $6,000 and then put it out, and, you know, it does okay. Again, there's no way to measure it. We're not sure who it really reaches, but it is nice to have. It's a nice promotional piece. And they are just amazing what they can do. It's just amazing. I'm just blown away by the technology, what they can do with information today and how they can reach potential customers. It's incredible.
Right.
I mean, in my business, I use Google, and we pay Google clicks, and I understand all that, search engine optimization. This is like so far beyond that.
And I know you spoke about it before when you came down. You were talking about marketing about a year or so ago, and that you... It was probably that going out to the radio market was too expensive, or...
It's a possibility. It's really a multimedia, kind of cross-the-line approach. For instance, it's... You can pinpoint your audience, say, by advertising on a business radio station, say, at a certain time of day, based on the demographics of who's listening at that Bloomberg radio, who's listening, and what's the demographics of those people, depending on what it is that you're trying to, you know, you're trying to accomplish. But it's really all over. It's everywhere. It's using all of the media across the lines to, you know, get across our message.
Okay, thank you.
Yes?
Mayor, how does the proposed rail trail and the complete streets project and all that kind of play into this? I'm sure that's going to change the dynamics a little bit.
Ties right into it.
It might, you know, cause a demand for different types of businesses or places to picnic. I mean, do we have all that infrastructure, and, you know, what's the future of that?
That's right on. I mean, those are the sorts of things that change communities. And again, you know, our trail system, I mean, just go visit any one area in the town where we own land, you know, especially the sort of the west side. And on the weekends, holidays, the trails are just packed with people, and we have sort of best trail systems. It's not all flat. I mean, you can do some, you know, serious climbing out there, and the trails go all the way, reach all the way out to, you know, Princeton, Lemmonstern State Forest, and all the way through Sterling. And, you know, there's a group trying to make the connection between each of these trails, but the bike trail's going to be a big home run for us. I mean, it'll be a big home run for us. But it's... Ron Anson always says, "It's where people sleep. It's where they eat. It's where they shop." That's what brings in revenue. That's what keeps the local economy going. And he's right. He said that for 25 years I've known him, and it's still the same. It's where people spend their money. And we also have a big machine here. If you look around at all the restaurants and businesses that we have, we have a big machine to keep fueling here. And, you know...
What is going on with that complete streets thing? Is that going to... When is that going to come to fruition?
Kristen just went to... She had... She was required to go to an all-day seminar, but we're at what junction now? We're in the design?
So we hired Bill Scully. You guys know that because some of you were at the hearing that we had a couple months ago. So there's several steps to this. So there's a... We have to come up with our priority list, and then that'll be another public hearing. So that's what he's working on right now, but the goal is to have that whole plan done by the end of December.
And then we're eligible for, you know, the big money, up to $250,000, is it?
$450,000 a year.
Okay. Oh, good.
And we're at the... I mean, we're not the first community, but we're on the top of the list there, so the faster we can get this done. So what we did is inventory the whole city in terms of our street infrastructure and our road infrastructure. Handicap accessibility is pivotal, right? We want to get those done in areas where we have really a good sidewalk system, but there's areas we missed that we didn't realize don't meet the new handicap accessibility laws. So we'll fix those first. So we're prioritizing it all. It'll eventually tie it in. So the Merriam-Abraham, when you get to that intersection, is a bike lane, and it just stops at Lindell. It won't anymore. It'll continue down Merriam. We'll tie the whole community into the bike, bicycle lane network. We'll tie in with places of employment, tie in shopping areas, schools, and we'll tie in the bike trail.
Maybe even this bike trail down from here down into Sterling.
Right.
It was talked down Route 12 and stuff.
That's the... The point is to tie it all in.
Right.
Because people go from community... I mean, you drive a bike, you can move, you can do 10, 15 miles in no time at all. So it's a matter of tying in, and each community is applying for this funding at different levels. But again, we'll, you know, we'll concentrate on our areas first, and then we'll, you know, start to bridge out to tie in other communities.
Good.
Great opportunity. Yes?
Is this going to... Is this campaign going to include overhauling the city's website?
We've already done that. So that's done. School's done. It will... We'll end up tying in, you know, eventually go on. Kristen Kelly, GIS, right, the top of her game on this and understands it. So we want it so that when you're, you know, navigating on your GPS or, you know, you're looking something up...
It's going to pop up.
It's going to pop up. Right now, if you look Google Lemmonstern, we pop right up, and that's without doing any search engine optimization. That's just based on... That's without paying per click. That's just because, you know, we get the most amount of hits on the website. So, we wanna take that to another degree.
Yeah. Now, is this, it seems to me that this is something that's, to do it right. And I think, I think it's a great, it's a great idea. You're gonna, you're gonna be needing to do this every year.
Yep, absolutely. I don't know to that degree, but I mean, I think, you know, look at, we've got these festivals going, they bring in lots of people. Everybody's, I mean, people around us have seen what happens when you do these festivals. You don't have to be a rocket scientist to figure it out. And so, it's being replicated, right? I mean, people are doing them all over the place. It's turning into big business. Just look at Mount Wachusett. I mean, at the mountain, you know, they, they completely understand what's going on. There used to be a ski swap sale once a year, and then, you know, now it's endless, which is a good thing. But they see, I mean, it's, you know, all you gotta do is the numbers. You know, Greg Chapdely is here. He could tell you, you know, "We're doing a small piece of this," right, Greg, "in terms of the beer fest." And these things, these events have tremendous potential. And what he makes, he rolls into the, you know, to the following year. And he buys equipment, and makes it better and easier, and-
You can inform them, the beer fest, I mean, that's, you know, different animals, what brings in different-
Right.
-customers. We brought in, 'cause we can track it through online ticket. We brought in people from ninety different communities out of Massachusetts, including the four states that surround us.
And the funny thing is that it ended at eight, and we watched where people went. And they just spread out and walked downtown, went to eat. They weren't going home for the night. I mean, this is, you know, this is eight o'clock. But it had their, you know, no one complained about it. It ended at eight. It was good for us. It was beer tasting. It wasn't, you know, a crawl. So, you know, that was the intent. So, it worked out really well, and they, we watched them, and they all made it to other restaurants. And the feedback has been really good from other businesses, not just downtown, but all over the city. So, yeah, it answers, you gotta really, once you get into this, it's done by professional people who have plenty of, you know, we have to bid this. But they have a, you know, client list that we can check with and look at what their results were and what they thought they achieved from it. And, yeah, and continue to build it. This evolves so much, the technology, that you can never really, you know, stop 'cause you're always advertising and promoting. The other thing that we hope to do is, if you think about how many different departments are in the city, we have our own budget. Think of what Sholen Farms spends a year on marketing and advertising. Think about, you know, money we raise that we end up, you know, putting out banners. And think of all the other departments within the city who some way or fashion are out spending money on advertising or marketing. Put all that together. And once you have a brand, and you have a logo, and you have some, a strategic plan to, you know, advertise and market the city, just think of how much more effective that, those advertising dolls would be. Sholen Farms, for instance. Think of that. How much, you know, how we can also help those other areas and entities who are trying to promote, you know, hiking, you know, as a hiking club or the trail stewards or whatever. Think about how this also helps them as well. Yes?
Not to, excuse me, not to be repetitious, but I think that, and I'm not looking for any brownie coins, but when I look back fifty, sixty years ago, as a young man growing up here in the city of Lummister, what we have to offer both the young people, the elderly people, and the new businesses that are constantly coming into the city of Lummister, how we've developed the city of Lummister. You hear at times, you know, you can't get through town. Well, you can get through town, but it's the fact that the community is growing. And I think that's a plus for you and the administration. I think the fact that it is growing in such a way that it's fast, but yet not fast. And by looking into different things that you're suggesting this evening, and how do we come up with a solution? How do we do this and put this into something that's workable? I think it is workable. And I think that if we continue working together, we have some great businesses that will work with you. I think that a plan can be derived in dealing with the businesses and the people who do this every day. I think it'll go somewhere. I look forward to seeing some of this before I go the other way.
Yeah, we're, as I said, we're ready. We're as ready as we're gonna be.
Good job.
Yes?
Mayor, I just wanted to mention, you know, you go out on a Thursday or Friday night, that's usually when my husband and I go out. There are some restaurants in town where you can't get a table. So, people are out there. People are spending the money.
Oh, Friday and Saturday night, if you go downtown, you know, I get, they use downtown all the time. But using as an example, every one of those parking lots is filled.
Yeah.
And thanks to Rollstone Bank, who allows their bank parking lot to be used, otherwise, you know, they'd be over here by City Hall parking lot, which isn't a bad thing. But, you know, I go around and count cars sometimes on a Friday and Saturday night just 'cause it's amazing how many people are out here.
Well, a lot of the places have, you know, gimmicks, trivia nights and that kind of thing. Like I said, Thursday nights seems to be a big night. So, I mean, I think that there's a lot of ideas that business owners could share amongst each other about what's bringing in business. 'Cause if you bring, there's a couple of restaurants in town that if you bring in more people from outside, it's gonna be like, there's gonna be line out the door.
Right, but there's Monday and Tuesday and Wednesday, and there's, you know-
But, you know, it's a good thing to see. But my question really is, you touched on a little bit, Devens, okay? And the big industries, you know, maybe biotech or something. What's, what's going on with Devens taking that kind, what's, is there a plan?
They do what they do. They've changed their zoning to allow more housing. They just changed for zoning for a potential another, you know, biomedical sort of company. I think for us, part of what this does, and it's a huge piece of it is, if you remember when they changed the name of Manchester Airport, they now call it Manchester-Boston. And I'm amazed at how many people think Manchester's near Boston. You know, they think they're like, they landed just outside Boston. Yeah, you did. You may as well be in like Michigan.
Right, exactly.
You know, you may as well just landed in Michigan because, so, it's getting over, but it gets over that image that you're, you know, really far away. So, some people from, you know, you land in Baltimore, Dulles, people think they're near Washington. You know, until it's a snowstorm, they charge you double for the taxi ride. It's like three hundred dollars, costs more than the plane.
Yep.
So, getting that image that we're not that far away from it all, I think is another piece that, we're not far from 495, but there's just this thing stuck in people's minds that we're like, you gotta pack a lunch and, you know, an extra battery charger and a flashlight because, you know, this could be the-
But it used to be that way.
Yeah, and I think it's getting better. But I think if you listen to a lot of commercials on the radio or whatever, we're only this many miles from here, and you just gotta program that into people's minds that-
Well, like Wachusett Mountain did that, right? That, you know, they're only so many minutes away from Boston and all that kind of thing, so.
And if you think about it, I mean, if you watch sort of the real estate market now, you know, the big cities are all pricing themselves. And when people looking to settle down and, you know, build a family, they're not able to do that anymore in the inner city. And more of that sort of investment is coming out this way, more in the housing area. And, you know, the rental market will continue to be strong. It's not going away. It's so many different reasons for people to rent versus buy. And you see just a couple of projects that we have going on. I expect probably that will continue. But the one, I think the one thing that we did that's the best thing that really determined our future is purchasing all the land. We now have some control over the development in our city that we didn't have before. And, you know, just at the time, it just happened, so it wasn't anybody's fault. It just happened. But now, because we own some key parcels that'll never be developed, that's our, that's the best thing that's ever happened. If you drive around these towns, council free, you must see it with the appraisal business, there are foundations all over the place. I mean, everywhere, there's a foundation, and if it's on a main road, there's a foundation. I don't know what they're gonna do with the growth, well, growth with housing.
Right.
I don't know what they're gonna do. But we have some control over our development. And that's why I say we're as ready as we're gonna be because, you know, all the stars are aligned. Maybe the moon didn't come out tonight, but even that's in our favor tonight, so.
If I may, I love the idea of marketing the plan. I think it's great. You know, for over a couple decades now, there's been a strong maintenance of effort. But when you have a company coming, it's gonna put your house in order. I think that's pretty significant, especially in today's market. We do a lot of great things locally, but when it comes to reaching out, you know? So, if it's great, if it has great success, how do we handle, you know, the additional success? You know, in the rationale, the question, the rationale behind the question is, the Chamber of Commerce years ago was putting a lot of pressure on the Downtown Association to make the festival, the J Festival, a regional thing. And the one year that we went along with it, we ended up with so many people that it was just out of control, as far as the number of people. You know, lines where the kids are trying to use the amusements that were twenty, twenty-five kids deep. And if you asked where they came from, most of them were not from the Lummister area.
Right.
So, how do we control that? You know, through the marketing, is there, is there an effort to try to keep it a small-town America still to take care of, you know, the Lummister people first? Or are we trying to just, you know, bring more people in from outside to appreciate the events we have?
You wanna build slowly and sustain. So, you don't want that huge mob, you know, all of a sudden, this, you know. I think that's what happened in Keene. My opinion was, when it started out, and I went, it was really a nice thing. And then as it grew, it grew to the point where they couldn't, all the restaurants, they couldn't handle all those people.
Right, right.
So, it became counterproductive to that. It was very expensive at the end of the day. And then people only knew them for that one event. I'm not sure they actually came back, 'cause the first time they saw them, there was a hundred thousand people in one square mile. You know, that might have been their first and last impression. I think here, we're talking more of a steady, growing, sustainable sort of thing where our events are successful and we don't, you know, they don't become counterproductive to the point where the people who really came for this small community event don't come anymore.
Right. Does the consulting group that's gonna be involved here, are they in a position where they can help maybe re-nurture the Lummister Downtown Association to get, you know, the stakeholders more involved with some of the things you're doing? It's been, it's been a battle going on since Richard Girard was mayor. So, I mean, this has been a long time, and it's been off and on, off and on. And you know as well as I do, there are some downtown merchants that really want nothing to do with what we do downtown.
Yeah, but even that, honestly, counsel, that's even changed. But, and I'll tell you, it's-
Yeah, I saw that this year.
Yeah. It's, it's like, the best way I can explain it to you, and this is just my own version of it, it's like a class reunion. You really don't have to go to your tenth class reunion anymore. It's social media. You can talk to anybody you want. You don't have to go to, you know, your friends coming in from Michigan or, you know, Ohio. Well, you wanna go, you know, meet them and whoever. You don't have to do that anymore. Social media is like a class reunion every day of the week. So, I look at it as, we don't, I mean, this room is at full tonight, but that doesn't mean people aren't watching it or paying attention what goes on. You're just doing it in a different way. They no longer have to come here. They can pick up the paper in the morning and read it from the two newspapers here. They can watch it on TV. They can, there's so many different ways that, you know, it's on demand, on, on access TV. You can watch it from wherever you want at any time.
I guess the real concern I have is that those stakeholders, those businesses that have been relatively quiet for a long time, they have a lot to gain through your efforts.
Yes.
And for them to be able to now finally step up and help you is significant.
Well, as I said, we raised the six thousand from, for that initial brochure back some years ago, all from businesses. So, they are supportive in their own way. I think, you know, they're giving up in different places. It might be a food charity at this time of year. You know, we kind of say that we move it around so that we're not always asking the same, you know, businesses. But I think you'll see a different, it's a different, it's a different world today. But again, we don't have meetings per se like big meetings. We'll have one or two a year. But the rest of the time, we're communicating via email or our Facebook. You have a business community development Facebook page. So, we interact with people in a different way than we used to, say, ten years ago or twenty years ago. So, it's like a meeting, but it isn't.
Yeah.
And when we need something, we just send out a blast, and can you do this? Can you take care of that? And it's working. Honest, we have a ninety-nine percent, I think, success rate now with the businesses, especially in the downtown. I think they see, they see it working. But now's our chance to, you know, have professionals do it. We have to bid it, and we'll, we'll have to, you know, sort of interview, make sure it's the right fit for us. And then we'll make our first step. But I think it's gonna be helpful in so many ways. Tell people about our good school system. A lot of communities aren't spending money on their buildings, can't do what we do, offer the services we do. And that's, we have a really good story to tell, but we all agreed, right, Val? It's impossible for us to come down with that message. We just tried ourselves to do it and said, "We're gonna need somebody from the outside, a professional, to whittle down our message." We have too much to say, you know? Which is a good thing.
I agree.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Very much.
And inserting in its place, quote, "No person, partnership, company, corporation, or association leasing or controlling any device or property shall willfully, negligently, or through failure to provide effective, available control technology allow the creation of noise that will cause injury, fatigue, or interference with the quiet enjoyment of life and property." I'll open this matter up to the public. Is there anybody in the public who would like to address the council either for or against this petition? Second time, anyone in the audience like to address the council either for or against this petition? Third and final time, does any member of the audience wish to address the council either for or against this petition? I'll go to members of legal affairs. Anybody have any questions or comments on this petition? Uh, any members of the council in general have any questions or comments on this petition? Seeing none, Mr. President, I declare the public hearing closed.
Okay. We can move right into the 705 hearings.
Yep. This is a hearing before the Leamester City Council relative to amending chapter 13, section 13-77 of the revised ordinances entitled Stop Signs by inserting Lorcrus Street against westbound drivers at Viscaloid Avenue. Is there any member of the audience that wishes to address the council either for or against this petition? Second time, does any member of the audience wish to address the council either for or against this petition? Third and final time, does any member of the audience wish to address the council either for or against this petition? Seeing none, I'll ask if there are any members of legal affairs that wish to address the council or have any questions? Any members of the city council in general wish to address the council or have any questions? Not, Mr. President, I'll close this public hearing.
Okay.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, I will now take a roll call of the honorable members of the city council, beginning with Councilor Frida.
Present.
Councilor Dombrowski.
Present.
Councilor Faclay.
Present.
Councilor Antiani.
Present.
Councilor Nichol.
Present.
Councilor Marshin.
Present.
I am present. There are seven members present this evening. Does the Vice President have any records to improve this evening?
Yes, Mr. President, I have records of October 24th and November 10th, 2016, and have read them, gone through them, find them to be in order, and let them be placed on file.
Okay, so the recommendation is to place the minutes of the city council meeting of October 24th, 2016, and November 10th of 2016 on file. Is there any questions or comments? If none, those will be placed on file, and we will move right into communications, beginning with C-27, Madam Clerk.
C-27 relative to the appropriation of $180,000 to the Emergency Management Agency Capital Outlay Expense Account, same to be transferred from the Stabilization Fund.
And C-27 will be referred to the Acting Chairman of Finance, Councilor Nichol.
Yes, regular course, I'd like to refer this to the Director of Emergency Management.
Okay, C-27 will be given regular course and referred to the Director of the Emergency Management. C-28?
C-28 relative to the appropriation of $60,000 to the Sanitation and Drainage Expense Account, same to be transferred from the Stabilization Fund.
And C-28 will be referred to the Acting Chairman of Finance.
Yes, Mr. President, regular course.
Okay, C-28 has been given regular course. C-29?
C-29 relative to the appropriation of $80,000 to the Landfill Cap- Capping Capital Outlay Expense Account, same to be transferred from the Stabilization Fund.
And C-29 will be referred to the Acting Chairman of Finance.
Yes, regular course, Mr. President.
C-29 has been given regular course. C-30?
C-30 relative to the appropriation of $40,000 to the Library Expense Account, same to be transferred from the Library State Aid Reserve for Appropriation Account.
C-30 will be referred to the Acting Chairman of Finance.
In regular course.
C-30 has been given regular course. C-31?
C-31 relative to the appropriation of $100,000 to the Group Insurance and Expense Account, same to be raised by fiscal year 2017 revenue.
C-31 will be referred to the Acting Chairman of Finance.
Again, Mr. President, regular course.
C-31 has been given regular course. C-32?
C-32 Dean J. Masurullah Mayor requests authorization to acquire by purchase, gift, and/or eminent domain the parcel of land located at 15 Carter Street and described with the Worcester Northern District Registry of Deeds in Book 2281, Page 164, for general municipal purposes, on such terms and conditions as the mayor deems appropriate, and as funding therefore raised and appropriate, transfer from available funds and/or borrow the sum of $179,000 for the purpose of said acquisition and costs related or incidental thereto, and further to authorize the mayor to enter into any and all agreements and execute any and all instruments as may be necessary or convenient to accomplish the foregoing acquisition.
Okay, and C-32 will be referred to the Acting Chairwoman of City Property, Councilor Frida.
Mr. President, regular course, with referrals to the Assessors' Office, Emergency Management, and the Treasurer's Office, and if we could find out if an appraisal's been done on the property, that would be good.
Okay, so C-32 will be given regular course with a referral to the Assessors' Office, the Emergency Management, as well as the Treasurer's Office, and the City Clerk can find out from the Mayor's office if an appraisal has been done. Am I correct? Okay, so we will move on to petitions. 21-17?
21-17 Kristen Kelly on behalf of the Planning Board, adopt a new zoning ordinance regarding the installation of solar energy.
21-17 will be referred to the Chairman of Legal Affairs.
Thank you, Mr. President. First time on the calendar, regular course, with a referral to the Planning Board, the Building Inspector, the Zoning Board of Appeals, and we also need to schedule a hearing for December 12th, 2016, at 6:40 p.m.
Okay, so 21-17 will be given regular course with a referral to the Planning Board, Planning Director, and the Zoning Board of Appeals, is that correct?
That's right.
And we will-
Also the Building Inspector.
The Building Inspector as well. Okay, and we will also establish a hearing on December 12th, 2016, at 6:40 p.m. All those in favor of establishing that hearing, please signify in usual manner. Those opposed, by a vote of seven to zero, the hearing has been adopted. 22-17?
22-17 Kristen Kelly on behalf of the Planning Board, update the zoning ordinance table of uses to modify the applicable of energy systems, renewable, and to add two new uses, one site solar system and off-site solar system.
Okay, and 22-17 will be referred to the Chairman of Legal Affairs.
Thank you, Mr. President, regular course, with referrals to the Planning Board, the Zoning Board of Appeals, the Building Inspector, and we need to establish a hearing date for December 12th, 2016, at 6:50 p.m.
Okay, so 22-17 will be given regular course with a referral to the Planning Board, the Zoning Board of Appeals, as well as the Building Inspector, and we will take a vote to establish a hearing on December 12th, 2016, at 6:50 p.m. All those in favor, please signify in usual manner. Those opposed, by a vote of seven to zero, the hearing has been established. 23-17?
23-17 Kristen Kelly on behalf of the Planning Board, update the definition of energy system renewable and create definitions for solar energy system for onsite use and solar energy system for offsite use.
Okay, 23-17 will be referred to the Chairman of Legal Affairs.
Thank you, Mr. President. First time on the calendar, regular course, with a referral to the Planning Board, the Zoning Board of Appeals, the Building Inspector, and we need to establish a hearing date for December 12th, 2016, at 7 o'clock p.m.
Okay, so 23-17 is also given regular course with a referral to the Planning Board, Zoning Board of Appeals, the Building Inspector, and we need to establish a hearing on December 12th of 2016 at 7 o'clock p.m. All those in favors of establishing that hearing, please signify in usual manner. Those opposed, by a vote of seven to zero, the hearing has been established. 24-17?
24-17 Kristen Kelly on behalf of the Planning Board, amend Section 22-62.3.7, the lemons to zoning ordinance by removing the words "and always within the right of way."
Okay, and 24-17 is referred to the Chairman of Legal Affairs.
Yes, again, regular course, with a referral to the Planning Board, the Zoning Board of Appeals, and the Building Inspector, and we need to establish a hearing date for December 12th, 2016, at 7:10 p.m.
Okay, 24-17 has been given regular course with a referral to the Planning Board, the ZBA, as well as the Building Inspector, and establish a hearing on December 12th of 2016 at 7:10 p.m. All those in favor of establishing that hearing, please signify in usual manner. Those opposed, by a vote of seven to zero, that hearing has been established. Moving on to 25-17?
25-17 Officer Richard Shea requests a stop sign at the intersection of Winter Street at Walnut Street for operators traveling southbound on Winter Street.
And 25-17 is referred to the Chairman of Legal Affairs.
Thank you, Mr. President. First time on the calendar, regular course, with a referral to the Police Department Traffic Division, and I don't know if there's a hearing necessary for this?
No, not until we put in ordinance.
Okay, so just a referral to the Police Department Traffic Division.
Okay, so 25-17 has been given regular course with a referral to the Police Department Traffic Division. Moving on to matters before the city council, the City of Leominster's financial report. Councilor Nichol, are you ready to report?
Actually, no, I've got to wait until the rest of the committee get in.
Okay.
Mr. President, do you want to take care of these matters for these guys in attendance first?
Absolutely, absolutely, so we can, we'll jump around a little bit, and- City property? We'll go to city property and property oversight, 20-17. Want to move that to the top of the calendar?
And 19-17 as well.
And 19-17, okay, we can go to that one first. So 19-17 will be referred to the Chairman of Legal Affairs. Are you ready to report?
I am. Christopher J. Canuth amend Chapter 6, Section 6-4 of the city ordinances entitled, quote, "Disposition of unclaimed dogs," end quote, by changing the amount of days a dog is held before they are euthanized from the state minimum of seven days to 14 days. We did get a letter from the Chairman of the Health Department, Mr. Canuth, in favor of this petition. We also heard him speak at the open forum. My, my personal recommendation is to grant the petition. I'll just defer to my other members.
I agree.
Councilor Nichol. I agree, Councilor Marshin, sorry.
I agree.
So we have unanimous recommendation, Mr. Chairman.
Okay, so you've heard the unanimous recommendation of Legal Affairs Committee to grant 19-17. Is there any discussion? Councilor Marshin?
Just a comment, I want to commend the petition of Mr. Canuth. This is an excellent petition, and it's a great, you know, it's a humane gesture is what it comes down to as well. The only issue that I would ask, and I should have asked it, or I couldn't ask it actually in public forum, do we do anything to publicize the dog after a certain amount of days for adoption, or is that a feasibility we can investigate? So, but in the meantime, you know, something if it's possible. If not, they do the best they can. I think it's a great gesture to move to 14 days.
Do you want to take a recess and ask a question?
No, no, it's fine, it's fine.
You're all set.
It's fine. I'd like to know. So, we should have recessed?
Do I hear a second for recess? Okay, all those in favor, the council now stands in recess. Mr. Canuth?
Yeah, actually, I didn't catch the total question, actually.
Well, the question I have is, so you have the dog-
Yeah.
And you're not getting a response, and you're going to extend it to 14 days. During that process, is there any way, instead of moving into euthanizing the dog, that the dog can move into an adoption, kind of an idea at that point?
Yeah, there are several things that we do already, you know. Facebook is a really great thing.
Yeah.
And Todd has been able to place a lot of dogs with other groups, rescue groups and things like that, that don't euthanize, and he's getting very good at it.
Excellent.
Particularly with some of the breeds that are difficult to place, like a pit bull. I must say, though, when I first took over the management of this, we had pit bulls all the time, but I have not seen one lately come across our radar.
Right.
Good.
Thank you, it's awesome.
Thank you.
Thanks a lot, people.
Thanks, thank you, Chris.
All right, Mr. President? Yes, Mr. President?
This is no problem. Can we just go back to the financial report?
Sure.
I have to admit, I didn't get a chance to hold it, but I do have the numbers now.
Okay, sure.
We started out with the beginning balance.
Can we go back to that in a minute?
Oh, yeah, sure.
Okay, so the council now stands back in session, and is there any other discussion on 19-17? Okay, seeing none, all those in favor of granting 19-17, please signify in usual manner. Those opposed, by a vote of seven to zero, 19-17 has been granted. Councilor Nichol, I want to take care of 20-17. Mr. Chapdeline is waiting, then we'll go back to that if that's okay.
Understandable.
Okay, so at this point, we will go to the City Property and Property Oversight, 20-17. Councilor Frida is the acting chair. Are you ready to report?
Yes, 20-17 Greg Chapdeline, Festival Director, request to reserve the use of West Street from Main Street to Church Street, the downtown common and the municipal parking lot, to the Baptist and Unitarian churches, for the third annual Johnny Appleseed Craft Beer Festival on Saturday, August 5th, 2017, from 6 o'clock a.m. to 11 o'clock p.m. And additionally, the use of the parking lot on Friday, August 4th, 2017, for the entire day, beginning at 6 o'clock a.m. for setup purposes and breakdown of the event. I'll go to my committee that is not here now that I think of it, I'm number one, so the recommendation would be to grant. Mr. Chapdeline's done a great job with it in the past, and totally support it.
Okay, so you've heard the recommendation to grant 20-17. Is there any discussion?
Just clarification, Mr. President. They're not serving beer at 6:00 in the morning, they're just setting up.
Setting up, right.
Well, you know, I kind of hesitate when I say things.
It would be a very long day for the staff.
But we don't know about the setup, though.
Is there any other, any other discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor of granting 20-17, please signify in usual manner. Those opposed, by a vote of seven to zero, 20-17 has been granted.
Thank you, Councilor.
Thank you.
Thank you.
So we will go back up to the top now. Councilor Nichol, do you want to report on the financial report?
Yes, Mr. President, we started out with the beginning balance of $14 million, $1,000, $1,444.15. We've had appropriations totaling so far, including the appropriations submitted tonight of $705,001. So we now have a remaining balance of $15 million, $296,473.15. I don't have any figures for the emergency reserve, so I will, I can report with the stabilization accounts anyway.
Okay, all right, is there any, any questions or comments on the financial report? Seeing none, we will move on to Legal Affairs. Petition 1-17, is the chairman ready to report?
Yes, thank you, Mr. President. Petition 1-17, President's Committee on City Ordinance Review, request that Chapter 14, Section 14-8, be deleted and replaced with a new Section 14-8 entitled Noise Control Ordinance. As the author of the petition and one of the members of her subcommittee are not here, they'd asked me to request further time.
Okay. And Councilor Frida, you all said with further time as well. Councilor Marshin, okay. All right, so you've heard the unanimous recommendation of the Legal Affairs Committee to give 1-17 further time. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor of giving 1-17 further time, please signify in usual manner. Those opposed, by a vote of seven to zero, 1-17 has been given further time. We will now move on to, that's on me twice, was that? Okay, so at this point, we will move on to items under Finance, to C-26. Councilor Nichol, are you ready to report?
I am, yes. We had a special meeting Monday night, and voted to put on the agenda with $70,000 of the Gallata Building expense account. I don't see the light on it tonight, but I see somebody in the inner sanctum, so I assume it will be taken tonight. But the other night, it was the same thing, so I don't know how many people are aware of what this is, so you and the council have all heard it, but I will explain it briefly. There are two elevators in the Gallata Building. One is for the use of prisoners and the, those who watch over them and tend to care. And then the other elevator, this is the use of, I guess you could say, lawyers and people. And so with that, the elevator that's a general public elevator is the one that's going down. It's a revolving account, there's money there. We actually voted on it the other night for the first time, and tonight, we're essentially ratifying that vote. So I just wanted to take time to let the public know what this is about, so. With that, I would direct the men that we ratified the vote taken on C-26.
Okay, you've heard the recommendation of the member of Finance to ratify C-26. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor of ratifying C-26, please signify in usual manner. Those opposed, by a vote of seven to zero, C-26 has been ratified. Moving on to old business, we have some, we have three second readings of an ordinance, so I will refer the first, second reading of an ordinance to the Chairman of Legal Affairs.
Thank you, Mr. President. Second reading of an ordinance, amend Chapter 3. Thank you, Mr. President. Second reading of an ordinance, amend Chapter 3 of the revised ordinances entitled Air Pollution by deleting Section 3-2 in its entirety and inserting in its place, quote, "No person, partnership, company, corporation, or association leasing or controlling any device or property shall willfully, negligently, or through failure to provide effective available control technology allow the creation of noise that will cause injury, fatigue, or interference with the quiet enjoyment of life and property." My recommendation is to adopt the second reading of the ordinance, and I'll go to my committee. Counselor Frida.
I agree.
Counselor Marchand?
Through the Chair, I agree.
Okay.
Mr. President, unanimous recommendation to adopt.
Okay, so you've heard the unanimous recommendation of Legal Affairs Committee to adopt the second reading of this ordinance. We will do this in a roll call manner, beginning with Counselor Frida.
Yay.
Counselor Dobrowski.
Yay.
Counselor Feckley.
Yay.
Counselor Lantiani.
Yay.
Counselor Nichol.
Yay.
Counselor Marchand.
Yay.
And I will be recorded as yay by a vote of seven to zero. The second reading of this ordinance has been adopted. Moving on to the second, second reading of an ordinance, Mr. Chairman of Legal Affairs.
Thank you, Mr. President. Second reading of an ordinance, amend Chapter 13, Section 13-77 of the revised ordinances entitled Stop Signs by inserting Lord Chris Street against westbound drivers at Biscuit Lloyd Avenue. My recommendation is to adopt the second reading of the ordinance, and I'll turn to my committee. Counselor Frida.
I'm fine.
Counselor Marchand.
Through the Chair, I agree.
Okay, unanimous recommendation to adopt, Mr. President.
Okay, so you've heard the unanimous recommendation of the Legal Affairs Committee to adopt the second reading of this ordinance. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, we will also do this in a roll call manner, beginning with Counselor Frida.
Yay.
Counselor Dobrowski.
Yay.
Counselor Feckley.
Yay.
Counselor Lantiani.
Yay.
Counselor Nichol.
Yay.
Counselor Marchand.
Yay.
And I will be recorded as yay by a vote of seven to zero. The second reading of this ordinance has been adopted, and moving on to the third second reading of an ordinance.
Thank you, Mr. President. Second reading of an ordinance, amend Chapter 13, Section 13-34 of the revised ordinances entitled No Parking on Certain Streets by deleting Cross Street North Side from Lancaster Street, 710 feet to Central Street. My recommendation is to adopt the second reading of the ordinance. I'll turn to my committee. Counselor Frida.
Through the Chair, I agree.
Again, unanimous recommendation, Mr. President, to adopt the second reading of the ordinance.
Okay, you've heard the unanimous recommendation of the Legal Affairs Committee to adopt the second reading of this ordinance. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, we will take a roll call vote, beginning with Counselor Frida.
Yay.
Counselor Dobrowski.
Yay.
Counselor Feckley.
Yay.
Counselor Lantiani.
Yay.
Counselor Nichol.
Yay.
Counselor Marchand.
Yay.
And I will be recorded as yay by a vote of seven to zero. Second reading of this ordinance has also been adopted. Is there any other old business to come before the City Council? Counselor Dobrowski.
I need to schedule a subcommittee meeting on that petition 1-17.
You gonna come?
I am.
That was nasty.
You guys don't have a night open till next month, seriously? What are you thinking?
I, you know, frankly, I'm not, I'm not 100% sure what it's all about, you know. It's Counselor Zephyr's baby and her committee.
Counselor Dobrowski, if I may, I just ask the city clerk.
1-17.
It might be an option if you want to have a little subcommittee meeting prior to the next City Council meeting. There's nothing really on the agenda.
Oh, okay, yeah, why don't we do that?
Okay.
Maybe a half hour before. Okay. I'll do what I can to make it.
Okay, so that'll be November 28th, 2016, 6:30.
6:30, okay, perfect.
Legal Affairs Subcommittee, okay.
Good resolve.
Yes.
Okay, all right, so that's been established. Is there any other old business to come before the City Council? How about any new business? Counselor Feckley.
I don't know if this is considered new business, and it may sound kind of trivial, but I was actually wondering why we don't have I-voted stickers at the election polls. I'm sorry to bring it up, the city clerk, but my son voted, and many, and other people mentioned it to me, too, and I did discuss it with other people before I brought it up tonight. My son voted in his first presidential election, and honestly, he was aghast that he didn't get a sticker. And there were a lot of people, I work at Pittsburgh State, a lot of people had stickers on. So I was just wondering why we don't have them, and if there's any way that we can get them for the next election.
You never had them, but next time we will.
Thank you very much.
Because you get 10% off at Kohl's.
Oh, okay.
I've heard.
All right.
If you have a sticker, so next election, we will have them.
Yeah, okay.
I want to thank you.
All right, thank you.
All right. Is there any other new business? Counselor Frida, do you have new business?
New business?
Breakfast.
Well, I thought there was an agreement.
Oh, that's right, yeah.
That's right, there you go.
Actually, we, no, never mind, I won't bring it up.
Okay.
Never want to vote that fellow initiative that...
Would you like to, if you wanted to talk about it?
Such a base.
I hope we're not affected by it. I think we will be. The, if the legislature doesn't do anything by January 1, 2018, the vote that we took on the medical marijuana will be retail establishment. I have the right to, which is the one reason I wanted to push it off till after the vote, because we could have had some conversation with them, see what their plans were, but that didn't happen. Let's hope the legislature can do something, because I think it's going to be, I think it's going to create a lot of issues. Tenancies and two, three tenement properties on what can be done in a unit, what can't be done, how landlords can control it, can't control it. I think, it's probably not a bad thing, but I don't think the state was ready to do it. And unfortunately, people voted for it, and now we're all going to have to look at it.
I think, you know, just a little footnote to that, I think House Speaker DeLeo made it very clear that he was going to amend, you know, what was voted on.
And there'll be a lot of backlash because...
Right, so I think...
People don't like legislators dealing with ballot issues.
Yeah, it'll be interesting, and it's something that we'll keep our eyes on and, you know, see how it pans out.
Always.
Is there any other...
Most of the communities that voted for medical marijuana feel like they were really duped. Some that voted on it when it first came out, now they're all trying to figure out how to deal with it. I talked to many of them, and there's a lot of concern out there right now.
Is there any other new business to come before the council? Okay, is there any, anything under the community calendar? Counselor Frida.
Absolutely, there is. Sunday is the, I think it's the 22nd, breakfast for the bands, and it will be in Pittsburgh High School, just yet, 8:00 to 11:30. Tickets are still $8, and can't get a better deal than that, from sausage to potatoes to eggs to muffins to bagels, fruit, just about everything. Bands trade off playing, Pittsburgh will play, Lemmonstour will play. Football team usually helps serve, so we usually serve about 1,000 people. The Lemmonstour and Pittsburgh Rotary Club, so it'll be a great event. Get tickets at the door, there's auction, there's a lot of things going on. So it's a nice social event. So anybody that has Sunday free, well, join us.
That's this Sunday, that's November 20th.
Right.
20th, not 22nd, 20th.
Did I say 22nd?
Yeah.
20, thank you.
All right, is there anything else to come under the community calendar? Counselor Dobrowski.
Yeah, we received this history of Lemmonstour through the Evergreen Cemetery that was authored by Mike Kerrigan, Lemmonstour Historical Commission. It's very good, and I think people should read it, and maybe we should have copies at the clerk's office that people can grab.
Sure.
It's really nice, we're really well done.
Sure. Yeah, I'm sure the clerk can, you can make, you can make some more copies. Okay, good.
Very good.
Counselor Lantiani.
Thank you. I'm glad that Counselor Dobrowski brought that up, because I brought it here with me this evening, and I, too, read it yesterday. It's fantastic. I mean, you know, the historical society that we have are both at the little brick house up here and next door at the main Gallaudet. It's amazing the number of hours that those gentlemen put in for no fee, no, nothing, but they enjoyed a history of Lemmonstour, and they do a heck of a job. I couldn't believe it. I picked this up, Sandy At Moon started reading it. It's unbelievable, and the history of Lemmonstour, and I've been around for too long, but it's still good history reading, so good job. Thank you.
All right, any other, any other business to come under the community calendar? Seeing none, we have one table petition upon which action is proposed under Public Service, which is 17-16. So first, I will take a vote to take this off the table for action. So all those in favor of taking 17-16 off the table for action, please signify in usual manner. Those opposed by a vote of seven to zero, 17-16 has been taken off the table for action, and it will be referred to the Chairman of Public Service.
Yes, Mr. President, this is Vivendi and Donovan, Attorneys at Law, dispute acceptance of Coolwell's layout, proposal C on Sammerset Drive, the continuance of Sammerset Drive, valid court, Fandlewood Drive, and Keeneland Circle. I have gone to the DPW and gone over what they have so far. They are ready to accept the portion of Sammerset Drive that includes a pump station, and Keeneland Circle are all set. So if I can, I'd like to divide this into sections, and recommend that we, one, accept Keeneland Circle, and, two, that section of Sammerset Drive that includes the pump station. The other streets, I submit, I haven't checked on yet. I'll go back down and review them and run it past the DPW, and hopefully, we can get some more done in the near future. But if you've been down there, Sammerset Drive is part of project, and the last time I was there, following up on the furthest end of it, it's still a dirt road, lots of activity going on. So I'm only ready to accept these two sections, and so I would recommend the acceptance of those, too, if we can do it.
Yeah, we, unfortunately, we can't do that. The petition is written, you know, as is, and the thing is, is, you know, personally, I'd like to see an official recommendation, you know, from the DPW in writing to us, you know, stating that they're ready to accept it, accept all this, and believe me, I'm the last person that wants to stall, but I'd rather make sure that we have all that, all of our ducks in a row, and we get an official recommendation from them, from the DPW, and ask them, maybe we should find out if that should be specified in this petition, that we're accepting that pump station as well, so.
Okay, I will do that.
You can check with your committee, but that's just my... Right.
Yeah.
Right, the attorney might, the attorney might want to petition this differently, so that it's clear.
I know, we did do one section already, so it was broken up before. So with that, no problem, I can get, tell the, you know, the council wants to, you see the letter, and also just double check with the planning board.
And I'll, can I check with your other members of your committee, Counselor Feckley? Do you want to weigh in?
No, I agree. I mean, I would, I would, I don't want to stall it either, but I would prefer that we get all the information we can, and so I'll go with that recommendation from...
With that, let's just...
Revised recommendation.
...take time at this point and data from there.
Okay, and Counselor Dobrowski, you're in the committee as well, do you have any?
No, I concur with the majority. I think that's...
So further time, and we'll get all the information and make sure that everything is inclusive in the, in this petition, so that we're clear on what we're accepting. All right, so at this point, I have a recommendation unanimous from the Public Service Committee to give 17-16 further time. Is there any other discussion? Counselor Frida.
Just through the Chairman, the Chairman, I was at the Planning Board meeting, and they were scheduling a walk-through of the area, because I think there was some confusion with them as well, with the, all the streets included, so the recommendation I don't think has come from them.
I'll call Kristen tomorrow and DVO as well.
They might have gone by now, because that was last Tuesday, so.
Is there any other discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor of giving 17-16 further time, please signify in usual manner. Those opposed by a vote of seven to zero, 17-16 has been given further time. If there is no other business to come before the City Council, I would ask for a motion to adjourn.
Move to adjourn in a second.
Second.
The council now stands in a hearing for November 14th, 2016. Thank you all very much.